Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We are, this is August 4th, 2022, and we are having a work session this evening to discuss the board goals. Typically during work sessions, we do not have speakers. It's not allowed per our bylaws, so we go right into the business of having conversations of the topic at the work session. So I'm going to kick it off back to our board clerk, Kalia Wade, who met with everybody individually and can start initiating the conversation. And hopefully President Elliott is with us tonight, but she may, she's having some technical difficulties, so we're hoping that her audio can be corrected. Kalia?
Good evening, everyone. So I, I do want to confirm that President Elliott, you know, is having some technical difficulties and would be speaking, but is trying to reconnect. So we will welcome her when she comes back. As Vice President LeBron did note, there were some mini-meetings that took place leading up to this meeting, so that we, the board will be able to have a starting point to discuss their 22, 23 board goals. And Dr. Jalloh is on as well, who will be helping to facilitate conversation and was in, in some of those meetings as well. The first group that I have up, and I will share on the screen, that made recommendations to updating the board goals is Commissioner Patterson and Commissioner Powell's suggestion. So I'm just going to share my screen here so that everyone can see, and then the conversation can be facilitated. All right, so Commissioner Patterson or Commissioner Powell, if you want to speak to some of your changes. There was a general recommendation to organize the board goals that have already been there. Right now, the board has three that you'll see in the middle. Increase academic achievement, increase the financial condition of, of RCSD and the SHBNO, of the RCSD, and increase equity for all students. And there's a recommendation to organize them in, in column format, so that each of the priorities are given equal prior to our value. And then the board commissioners did also recommend to add two new buckets of goals, one being improve board operations and decision-making, and one being support safe learning and working environments. If either of you wants to speak to that with the, with the rest of your colleagues to explain that suggestion.
Yeah, well, I'm just gonna say, I think they're self-explanatory.
Okay.
And for me, it's, you know, as the last one there, the support safe learning and working environments, recommend a new goal. What I'd like to say to that without making our schools safe for everyone, be it the students, teachers, and even the maintenance men, whoever works in those buildings. But more so relative to the, the children, we have to make those schools conducive to learning. And the only way to doing that is making sure our schools are safe. So I thought that was a very important, you know, new recommended goal.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson and Commissioner Powell. There were also some additional changes that were made to the other remaining bullets that have been, already been there. As it relates to the academic, increased academic achievement, the recommendation is to change the third bullet, so that it reads, ensure district equity, quality and consistency by establishing standard curricular options for students. There was also the recommendation made that the board should focus on targeting reading and writing, and that was, is going to be open for discussion. And then also the recommendation to target receivership schools as well as to constantly update current RCSD academic policies. Any discussion on those?
Well, I just want to add, I remember the discussion is to whether to put it more specific information about academic achievement in the policy or in the strategic plan, or in both. And so I remember that being a significant part of the conversation as well. And, you know, wondered if, how the board might feel about those different places for that kind of metric to measure the district's success.
I believe that was a discussion, that was also, that was a discussion with Commissioner Simmons as well, group.
Oh, great.
I would only, it's obvious because Dr. Jalloh just chimed in, but she was part of our group, and the changes that you're seeing in this column were, in large measure, came from Dr. Jalloh, so.
I'm just asking for clarity. We still have to actually, as a board, vote on these, right? Because you're just sharing everyone's, like, kind of throwing it all out there, right?
Yes.
All right. And then the other thing, I guess, I just would need clarification on even like what the board would actually do to make schools a safe environment from the board perspective as a board goal.
Do you want?
Well, whoever added it, whoever added that goal, I don't, was in your work session.
So, I, I mean, one aspect is safe, physically, safe, emotionally, safe, socially, you know, just a broad term of safe. So as a, as a board, you might have policies about making sure that different groups, all students are safe, but different special groups of children are safe. You might have policies that make sure that your physical spaces are safe. You may have policies around how people come in, in and out of your buildings or access your children in a safe way. So it's, it's a pretty broad, it could be done in many ways. So policies might be one way that you do it. How you handle your, what do you call those meetings that we have? And I'm escaping, your superintendent hearings. It might be reflected in that. It might be reflected in your ethics, not your ethics, your safety policies. So I think it's more around policy that you might be looking at to make sure that every aspect of the children and your staff are safe when they come into your school and district community.
And the safety committee and safety recommendations that come out of that committee.
But how is that a board goal? You didn't answer my question, Dr. Jalloh. You said policies. And are you saying that the board goal should be to focus on policies around?
No, I'm saying, no, no, no. I'm saying that what happened is, I think, I know for myself personally, we started looking at other districts, and many of them have language around creating a safe space for, for students, or a safe learning environment, or a safe. There's no language right now in your goals around a safe learning and/or working environment.
So can you point to which district has that as a board goal? And like how they're implementing that as a board goal? Because one of the criticisms that you gave us or critiques, I don't want to say criticism, is that our goals were too broad. And I do agree with you, like, if the goals are too broad and too vast, then they mean nothing. And there, there's no way to actually measure an outcome. There's no.
Right. Well, listen, this was just an initial conversation, that it's something that you might want to consider as you talk about goals. I could think of a few ways you could measure it. However, once again, does it belong here, or does it belong somewhere else? Or does it belong in both places, right? You, you could have some people put in their, their blueprints, or their strategic plans, or what have you. But I do think that, you know, safety, whether it's cybersecurity or making sure kids are safe online, safe in the classroom, safe in the, you know, wherever. I, I think somewhere it should be present. Now, maybe this is not the place, but I do think it's worth, worthy of some conversation at some point.
Yeah, but I'm just, again, if you can point to a district that has a goal for the board in a large urban, in the big five. I don't want to talk about suburban schools. They don't mimic, they're not the Rochester City School District, and they're not a large big five. So in the big five, or a large urban school district like Chicago, Philadelphia, Newark, Oakland, like a large urban school district where that is part of their board goals. If you, Dr. Jalloh, can direct me and point me, you can, it could be a text or an email.
Okay. I'll, I'll find some, some places.
Thank you.
Okay, so those were recommendations under the safe, support safe learning and working environments. There was also some, some recommendation made as a release to the financial condition of the district. And the, the fourth bullet that is listed currently kind of combines both, and it's suggested to split these apart, so that there would be a bullet that would increase revenues through advocacy at the city and state levels and maximize revenues by approving efficiencies. And that would be recommended efficiencies from the administration. And then, of course, review and update current RCSD financial policies regularly. So those were from that group. Is there any further discussion on, on, or any support for any of these?
I agree that we can break them up. That's the question that you're asking, Kalia. That they be separated out, the.
This one here, yes. The suggestion was to, let me stop sharing, and I'll share what the, what the current one says, and then bring, bring us back. So the board goals currently have as the fourth bullet here. The board goals currently say maximizing and increasing revenues and improving efficiencies to improve the district's financial position. So that's what's currently there. But the suggestion is to split it apart, so I'm going to go ahead and reshare again. So the suggestion was to increase revenues through advocacy at the city and state levels, and then maximize revenues by approving efficiencies.
You muted President Elliott.
I don't understand what that one means, to tell you the truth. Maximize revenues by approving, approving efficiencies? And how will we really be able to measure that? And is it, is it improving, or is it approving?
It's approve, it's approving.
That it, it shouldn't be improving, but it should.
No, that's, I think I'm gonna let Commissioner Powell explain why it's approving.
Yeah, so the, the administration knows better than we where, where efficiencies can be found, because they're like on the ground. And so when they bring us resolutions that address efficiencies, we can improve our financial position by supporting resolutions that, that target inefficiencies and eliminate them.
So how will we know that we, that they are efficiencies?
Well, they have to make, the administration has to make the case. They have to show us that, you know, what one option costs and what the other option is calculated to save. And then after, after that decision, you know, you do the, you do a similar analysis of, of operations after the change. And if the efficiency, if the, if the savings aren't there, then, you know, the, the board has, first of all, first of all, the board has an obligation to ask what happened after we approved such and such resolution? And if it didn't produce efficiencies, then the board can insist on going back to the way it was. If it, if it did in fact improve efficiencies and save money, then we'll know that, because, you know, we'll have, we'll have bu- budget line surplus.
I, I think that that probably needs to be, how, how do we determine? We need to know, how do we determine if there have been efficiencies? I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Powell, but I, I'd like for us to have that more specific. You know, are we, are we doing it based on all of the resident, financial resolutions that may come for us? Should we take this in parts? Meaning, maybe we look at, how can we be more financially efficient in central office, for example? How could we be more financially efficient with transportation? You know, and I'm just throwing those things out, because this, this is pretty broad. And at least for me, from my position and some of the conversation I had with the group that I was in, you know, what is it that we can accomplish for year, for this, for the year coming up? You know, and, and how can we, you know, go back at the end of this, this school year and determine whether or not we met our goals that we had established in the beginning? So this may be a little broad to me.
President Elliott, it appears you have some hands come.
Oh, am I, am I leading this? I thought, why did I think Dr. Jalloh was facilitating this?
Yes, but you, you would need to call on the hands.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, President Elliott. Just a, a, a thought around the conversation regarding efficiencies just now. And I'm thinking, because I see what you're saying, you want us to, to have it aligned with more specific language, which might be something around in alignment with the fiscal plan outlined by the state, or whatever the case is. So some of those efficiencies have already been outlined in a roadmap for us. And so we would just want to make sure that certain things that are coming before us align with, or support the decision-making process that aligns with those pieces. So I don't have the direct language, but that would probably be one of the directions we could think about going in.
I think Vice President LeBron raised her hand, thanks.
Vice President LeBron, somebody's at my door, so I'm sorry. Vice President LeBron?
Yeah, I'm actually, I, one, because of time, we, I, myself and President Elliott only have 30 more minutes. The commissioner scheduled a meeting with us at six, so we are gonna have to hop off at six. And I feel like this process, we're like never gonna get through everybody's. But it was also my understanding, even based on Dr. Jalloh's feedback to us about our goals at the board retreat being so broad that they're not really measurable. And then here we are with the first set of recommendations, again, being so broad that they can't be measured. So I, I don't know where the miscommunication happens, but I don't want to support any goals that are so broad. And even our previous goals, we can't really measure that. So for me, increasing revenues through advocacy, we can't measure that. Unless we're saying, oh, we had a meeting and we sent a letter, that's, that doesn't actually, for me, lead to an actual outcome for the district in a positive way. So unless it's measurable, I, I'm not going to be supporting it. I just want to put that out there.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah. When you try talking about approving efficiencies, you, you, you're gonna have to deal with the trust factor. We just didn't approve the insurance debacle that they presented us with. We didn't pass that. We still stuck with the old insurance, regardless of what they presented to us. And there's a lot of situations like that. We still spent that money on summer school, regardless of this data that say we oversp, we overspent and wasted a lot of money last year on summer school, because, because of low participation. And the, people were just getting paid for nothing, man. And we, I don't know, we approved that. And so just approving, us approving stuff more, or disapproving stuff more. We, we, that's too broad. We, we have to, there's no trust here. There's no trust. We're questioning everything, and rightfully so. I think that's why we're here, and why we're here, to question stuff. But I, I just don't want us to make it seem like it's, it's some simple process.
Do we have any language around evidence of district formula for allocating funding to schools that provide additional funding for schools enrolling higher proportions of, we know we have a disproportionate number of low-income students, but you know how we have disproportionate number of students with disabilities and English language learners in, in some of our schools? Do we have any, any type of formula allocation that we're looking at to make sure the funding is adequate? That would be an example of an efficiency, but a more direct measure of, to, to the point to be made. That's language that's actually measuring efficiency.
The, the other piece too, that, that we talked about in, in the Council of Great City Schools advices on this, that when we do our goals, that they need to be student-focused. So we need to be looking at, how can we language them such that we're focusing in on students? So, you know, just to use the example that Ricardo had around summer school, for example, you know, and to Commissioner Powell's, you know, language around approving efficiencies, that is connected to students. And so, you know, what is it that we, we're, we're looking at approving efficiencies? But what happens when there are not the efficiencies? Meaning that, in this case, that attendance may be an issue in summer school. Question I would have is, should we fund summer school next year? Or should we fund it at a, a significantly reduced level based on the historical attendance data? So I'm just sort of just throwing out, that out there, so that we can have, we can be more specific around our, the language of the goals. And of course, we know that goals are supposed to be broad, but, you know, some of this, in my view, is a little, is a little too broad. So, and, and we don't know if we've achieved those goals at the end of the year, really.
President Elliott, I just want to add, like, again, I, I don't know how that would be a goal. I'm just trying to understand, like, goals and what. I'm just trying to understand, like, goals and what's measurable. And I know that we also talked about Smarty Goals. And then folks are chatting in the chat, and our, our lawyer already told us not to do that. Um, so I just, because the public cannot see the chat, and we are in a public session. So, um, Commissioner Simmons did ask though for someone to answer her question.
Yeah, the question that I posed was not in the chat. It was posed publicly on the Zoom. But, um, I think it was kind of skimmed over. So in the chat, I asked if someone could answer my question so we could have a public dialogue.
Yeah, but I, I'm asking, I'm gonna ask one of the deputies if they can, potentially Carmine, cuz finance is under him. And it's a finance question, if he can jump on to answer the question around, um, the funding formula for schools and an equitable one in regards to special ed and overpopulation of first some schools and so forth. So Carmine, if you or Vern, and I know this is outside of like goal setting, you probably weren't prepared, but I just would have asked that you.
Before they get on, can I, can I just ask a clarifying question to Camille? Are you asking how monies are portioned to schools by administration? Or are you asking how monies are portioned to schools from the state? Or, or, or from, you know, which, which one are you, from state to school district? How monies are sent? Or from school district to different schools in your district, within your district?
Within the district. So I'm asking if we have any measures um, about, that demonstrate evidence of how the district formula, allocating the funding to the schools, um, how we are providing additional funding for schools with higher, um, enrollment of special education students. So this is a very student-focused question and measure that I'm asking about. And looking at, are, do we have any measurements that demonstrate our, our evidence of making sure those funds are allocated for those students? English language learners and students with disabilities, where there's a disproportionate number. And that's, again, um, evidence of district formula for allocating funding to schools. Yes.
Thank you.
Carmine, can you respond to that?
Good afternoon, yes, uh, good evening, sorry. I can respond to that. Um, so service and funding is based on enrollment and where we place students. There is a total allocation per pupil that we, we allocate for schools, for students to use, uh, for schools to use for like supplies, um, you know, additional services. And they get a, a, a amount per student with disability, an amount per L student. Um, that, but that's for what they call a taboo budget, a total allocation per pu- purple, per pupil. It's not a set amount. The funding really travels with the student. When we say, we're going to add a twelve-one-one in this school, that teacher would go there, that teacher aide would go there. That's the funding that would follow the, the student there. But there is no set amount to say that, based on, you know, uh, a student has a twelve-one-one, this is the money they'll have to provide resources. So I hope I answered that, but there is a small set aside for what we call operating expenses budgets, that there's additional funding for students with disabilities and L students.
So to get back to Commissioner Powell's, um, question in the chat around, what was the original question? The original question had to do with the goal about approving efficiencies. And, um, my, my, um, my response to that had to do with, you know, how do we do that? That seems to be, you know, pretty broad. I mean, how do we, how are we gonna determine that we've achieved that goal? What is it that we are needing to plan out to demonstrate that we've achieved that goal? So is it, I mean, you know, do we do it just on general terms? And every resolution that comes through, we look at, you know, how, um, how efficient the, um, the amount of money that is used for that? I mean, I've just, I'm not clear about how we, you know, go about determining, that, that there have been efficiencies and we're approving efficiencies. And I don't know if we're, we could, we're able to give, and maybe we can, I, I'm just throwing this out here, that, that we can give, uh, the district specific enough directions to be able to respond to that. Can you respond to what I just said, Commissioner Powell?
No, I really can't. Um, I think we're, like, Commissioner LeBron said earlier, we, we should be getting through the other recommendations, just to get.
So is this one?
We need to get through the other recommendations from the other groups, so that, uh, before you guys leave. Um, so we all have a general sense of what's on the table before we start poking holes.
Okay, alright. Fair enough.
Okay, um, I'm going to go ahead and share the recommendations from the group, um, with President Elliott, Vice President LeBron, and Commissioner Simmons. Hopefully, we all can see. And as a reminder, everything is on board docs. Um, the recommend, these are the recommendations underneath each of the groups. Um, under financial condition of the district, there was a recommendation to implement participatory budgeting within the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, to allocate ten million dollars for the community to have, uh, to drive the, direct local stu- student programming and services. And to revamp the budget or budget book for the twenty-three, twenty-four years, be more accessible and specific, but also have a com- comprehensive review. Um, there was also a discussion regarding directing and audit of the Title I funding. Under increased equity for all students, there was a suggestion to conduct a review of district placement practices from an equity standpoint, to ensure that all schools provide the same capacity per, which includes per people spending, facilities, et cetera, with the intention to develop a process for improvement, um, for board approval. And then also, there was a discussion regarding, um, somehow tying that to equitable reconfiguration of schools. Um, under the heading of, uh, improve academics, um, there was a discussion regarding, um, directing improvement with each of, of the special demographic groups. And, um, ensuring that the data is disaggregated, that is presented to the board. Um, there were some key points that were brought up there. Um, Comis- uh, President Elliott wanted to ensure that all, um, all board goals were tied to student and, and students' achievement. And then, under the budget, um, there was a question about how can the board ensure that there's a student focus, um, when the board adopts a budget? I don't know if anyone, um, from that group wants to articulate more clearly any of those points.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start from the last point. Um, we need to be able to go into the budget. I think, I think this is more, you know, I'm sort of stealing from Dr. Jello, I believe. But, but this is more about, you know, how can we go into the budget? And determine that, um, we've got, um, a, 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 a program of, you know, the, the, uh, to improve, well, I'll just do the, the one that comes across. Um, the Ninth Grade Academy, for example. You know, that, that's an example of student focus. Or how, how can we go into the budget and knowing that we've got the right resources for our ELL and our students with disabilities? Can someone from our, from the community look into our budget and determine that all the resources that are, that are needed, uh, for those, th- those are just three examples of, uh, you know, student-focused kind of, uh, budget. Uh, Commissioner Adams?
I, I think, um, we ought to listen to the students. I think they know, um, where our focus should be. Um, cuz, to be honest, man, everybody uses pay attention to the students as talking point. Everybody says students first. I'm talking about from the east side to the west side, to the Republican, to the, to the Democrat, everybody uses that, um, student first. Um, so, thi- this is kind of broad. Um, but like I say, we have to, um, get some direction from the students, man. Uh, that, that's my input on that. And my last thing, I really, um, support this in order of the Title I funding. I definitely support that. And one last thing, my camera is off because I'm, I live in the nineteenth ward in the, in the, um, the connection is really bad. So I'm, I'm just doing, leaving my camera off, hoping that I don't, um, lose my connection.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Adams. Any other comments or questions around?
I actually have a comment. Is, is the question on the floor, how can you be more student-focused when you do your budgets?
Yes.
So, when a budget item is brought to your attention, I mean, simply asking the question and seeking some detail on how this will impact the outcome for students. How will this help a particular groups of students? Will this help students in a particular school? Will this help a particular, um, student in this area? To be more specific, you can ask, when you see all these resolutions and when you see these contracts, how, always asking the question, how will this actually make a student's life better? Or, or put them on the journey towards more success. And I think if you start asking those questions, in addition to the finances, in addition to the soundness of whatever it is they're talking about, that you also include a question about how many students, which students, and or how will they be positively impacted? Right? So if you're having a summer school and it's six million or sixteen million or whatever, how will students be better because we spent this money on summer school in this way? Rather than, I'm gonna have this program, I'm gonna have that program, and it all looks good, but how's it going to help students?
The, the other, um, piece that I'm, uh, uh, would like to just offer for consideration to the district, uh, uh, and, and to us, I should say, is that in the school profiles, uh, we may even want to be, uh, specific around, um, th- there should be some line items with regard to, um, special education. ELL, for example, you know, uh, can, can we, um, re- reconfigure the school profiles to include, or I shouldn't say reconfigure, but just to include, you know, um, how the money is, you know, being spent with regard to instruction? And, you know, those specific, you know, populations. And that's just two that I'm thinking of, uh, right now. Um, but, you know, can we go, can a parent go into, say, school number nine and determine, you know, how much funding is allocated for, you know, a population over there that is, you know, a, a large ELL population, in terms of how much money is being spent for that population? There are no other questions. It seems that we can go on to the next, to the next group.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty, so, um, Dejaun is helping me, with my screen services. Dejaun, can you please stop the sharing? Thank you. Um, so then I'm going to move on. Um, I did receive also some submitted, uh, um, information from Commissioner Adams. I'm gonna bring his up next. Okay, and Commissioner Adams, I know we didn't get, uh, didn't have the opportunity to, um, to flesh these out. So I don't know if you wouldn't rather talk them through, um, versus me articulate them, cuz I'm not sure if I'll do, do it as, as much justice. Commissioner Adams?
This, the first one is really simple. Um, there were some incidents that happened in the, in the district this past year. But we, we need to stay strong and keep encouraging, advocating and promoting parents coming to the school, parents' involvement in this district. We cannot do it without them. Nobody knows their kids better than them. And so, I think as a board, we definitely should be promoting. We, we gotta figure it out. We gotta get them back involved. Um, I think, I don't think, I, I, I go to a lot of stuff. And the sports attract a lot of parents. Parents that don't normally come to stuff. A lot of the fathers show up at the sports. We have to support that. We have to get them in school, um, supporting any way nece- by any means necessary. Uh, and as a board, I also, um, think we need to build a little more tolerance for each other's, um, nonsense, uh, behavior during public meetings. We gotta figure it out. Unless we go too far, then we need to call it out. We need to call it out when they go too far. And sometimes, things go way too far. Um, it's with one thing, um, break, break a rule, but when we start breaking the law, we have to be careful here. Um, and as a board, we need to visit our schools. We need to go to our schools, um, and if, if you go with the right attitude, they're gonna embrace you, man, uh, and, and go regular. And the last goal that I had on here, we have to, um, really take, um, our time, um, research, do the research, um, and in our selection, um, of transition that we're getting ready to go through, in reference to, um, new leadership. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Any comments, uh, on what Commissioner Adams has just presented? I would, um, offer the comment, I don't, I can only see a certain number of, um, hands up. Um, so if someone has any comment, feel free. Um, but Commissioner Adams, only thing that I would have wa- want to include, when you talk about parents going to games, they not only go to sporting events, but they also go to other events. They, they, they come on the first day when they have orientations, and they, they really are um, involved. Problem becomes in, is that if you have meetings, um, first of all, if they don't, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but if you have meetings in the evenings, they have no transportation, they gotta get buses, you know, all those are, are concerns that, uh, they may have. And, and the other thing, you know, if, if, if teachers and others are calling, um, parents only when they're doing bad things, who wants to come up there to hear that about their kids? So, you know, there are myriad of reasons why students don't come, like to parent teachers association meetings or, you know, one-on-one conferences, you know? If we can flip that and start talking about the great things they're doing, we know our students got challenges, but if we can call about good things, that will help to, to begin to develop the relationship. Um, so I would also add those other events as well to that. Uh, Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna make a comment relative to bullet number three, but it's just not the proper place, um, to comment on that. But, um, there's just something in there that, that bothers me that, um, you know, was said, uh, or written. But again, this is not the proper place to, uh, question that. So I'll speak with, um, Commissioner Adams offline, you know, relative to that.
Uh, Vice President LeBron?
Yeah, I just, I guess for me, wanted a little bit of clarity in terms of how Commissioner Adams sees these points, or potential some of these points into an actual goal, um, where, where it may fit. And I'll leave it at that because I think there's one more commissioners, like, uh, uh, feedback to go through before we have to hop off in nine minutes. But, um, that, that's what I'll say for now. I, oh, I do wanna lift this point up, though, President Elliott, as a parent for twenty years, and I, I'm proud of that. So I'm proud to be a district parent. Despite all of the challenges in this district, we are a hundred percent public education in this household. But I will say, I have always had teachers call for positive, um, feedback for all three of my girls. Um, I, I, sometimes it's not a phone call because they don't have the time, and that's okay. Sometimes it's an email, sometimes it's a text. Well, now, today's, today's day and age is a text message. Back in the day when nations, you know, we didn't really have cell phones like that. But, um, I just wanna share that because I, I know that there is some individuals in the district who's that, that is their unfortunate experience. But it has not been mine with all of my girls' teachers. And I'm dating Naisha back twenty years, Gina back. but it has not been mine with all of my girls' teachers. And I'm dating Naisha back twenty years, Gina back, you know, eighteen, and then Sophia. Um, and with the apps that we use now, and a lot of our elementary schools, teachers are using those to communicate with parents in a different way. And so I would love for us to even figure out how to expand those apps across all of our elementary schools, so that they have that two-way communication. Because it is stressful, there's competing values and time for everybody, including parents, including staff, so finding ways where we can allow them to communicate more. But I just have to say that, because I know that that is the experience for some folks, but it has not been mine, and I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, uh, will also include that, is why I agree with that. It's not all. But in, in, in most teachers that I've, in most, with most parents, one of the things that they say is that, you know, they get these calls about the behavior of their children, they gotta take off of work, and and it just seems to be more of, from the, uh, relationships that I have with parents, more of the negative versus more of the positive. So I'm glad that your experience was a good experience. Uh, any other comments on what, uh, Commissioner Adams presented? All right, Commissioner Adams, thank you very much. And we have one more, um, Callia?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yes, um, Commissioner Malloy, I believe, is gonna verbally present hers.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just have to, I'll make it quick, because I know, uh, you two have to leave. In terms of our financial outlook, and I'm sorry that this isn't up on the screen, would it be helpful, Callia, if I write it in the chat? And then we can cut and paste it? Okay, so I'll, I'll write it in the chat afterwards. I'll prevent, I'll present it verbally first. In terms of financial, improving the financial outlook for the district, um, I was wondering if there's a way that we can add something to the effect of, um, committing to develop an incremental long-term plan to address our structural inefficiencies outlined by our state monitor, and reconcile these with our FMPs. So I'll put that in the chat. Um, just, I thought that that was more maybe specific wording, that it's more measurable, um, in nature. Um, and if that's included in our goals, um, I think that would be helpful. So that was the financial outlook one. And then in terms of equity, um, I had something very similar to what it sounds like the Vice President, LeBron and Camille and Cynthia came up with, uh, was to develop an equitable process for reconfiguring our schools. Um, so, that's interesting, because we haven't spoken, and, and I came up with something similar. Um, but I definitely think that that needs to go under our, um, equity, uh, goal as well. I didn't have anything else to add. I was, um, satisfied with, um, what other commissioners have, they've presented so far, um, in terms of improving academics, um, but those were the two major ones that I had.
So, so Commissioner Malloy, can I ask you to, um, word that in a way in which it's student-focused?
Oh, sure. Both of those, or the first, the finance?
First one, the financial.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Um, I don't know if I can do that right on the spot.
No, 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 not, not asking that. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. And I'll send that to Callia for it to send out to the board then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it looks like we've got a number of, you know, goals that we, um, you know, sort of brainstormed in our various groups. And the question becomes, you know, we've got to streamline those down, and how many do we, to, do we envision that we can accomplish within the year? You know, we don't wanna have so many that, you know, it's not going to be where we can achieve those, those ones. And then we need to have those that, because, you know, unfortunately, we tend, because we're doing this work, we don't always keep our, uh, keeping the forefront our goals, because we're sort of, you know, tend to be putting out, you know, uh, I won't go there, but we don't always put, um, keep our goals in the forefront of when we are, uh, making decisions and improve, approving resolutions, or some of the other work that, that we do. And so, you know, looking at maybe three, or, or whatever the number is, Dr. Jallow?
Oh, no, I was gonna let you finish.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the, the, the goals, I just want to remind you, the goals are not just for you to guide you and your work as a team, but the goals are also for your superintendent to be able to read them, understand them, and create complementary goals for their work as the leader of your district. So, you know, if you can kind of keep those double lenses in mind, as you go through this process, I think it will help many people throughout the district, uh, in focusing them on, on the work that you want them to focus on.
Dr. Jallow, but should we just have, and I think that, uh, there were some conversations around this, um, you know, a few months ago, but should these goals, should there be one set of goals? And then should there be objectives that the superintendent should accomplish based on our goals? And, um, and if that's the case, we've got to make sure that the goals that we establish are the kinds of goals that, um, the district can achieve. Can you, can you respond?
Right, so I don't, I don't wanna shake your whole process up. I really don't. But in many places, you'll see that the board will say, these are our core values, beliefs, and vision. Then the administration creates goals and objectives to meet that vision and, and align to that core vision and values and beliefs, right? I don't wanna shake it up, but that, that is what is, I see more commonly happening than board goals, and then other, uh, entities have goals as well. But, um, it, you, I, I can see it, if, if, if it works, you know, if it's not broken, then, you know, we don't have to fix it, but, the idea is that people can understand what the direction is of the district. But more importantly, so that at the end of the year, when you evaluate yourself, I hate to use the word evaluate, but when you assess for yourselves, how well you operated as a board, you are able to say, listen, we did really good on the finance side, but we have some challenges as relates to portions of the, of, of equity, you know, we were, we still have these inequities or I did, or we really hit equity really great, but, you know, we still have some challenges, but, you know, um, some financial, you know, you can, you can have that kind of discussion amongst yourselves at, at the mid-year, maybe at the end of the year, to see how well you're, you're progressing. Um, it would be more detailed for administration, of course, but for you, for yourself.
Commissioner Simmons, thank you, Dr. Jallow.
Sure.
Thank you, President Elliott. Um, this, this question is actually for you, Dr. Jell, and follow up to what you were just saying. So, because as you're talking, I'm thinking about early grade literacy. Thinking that our disproportionate, our, our, our current numbers and the reality of our students. So if early grade literacy is a value and a goal that we would like to see increase across the district, or focus on early grade literacy, focus on, um, pre-K through eight, then that would be a goal that we want to make sure we put under that academic piece, and provide some measurements, uh, whatever percentage of students we wanna see, or, or we just wanna generally state that we wanna see an increase in that, and then the board or the, uh, district would then be able to say, hey, based on where we are, our baseline, we wanna see, uh, we're, our goal is going to be X percentage of students, we want.
Right, so you, you guys are policymakers. You're kind of high up, you're the highest on the totem pole, so.
Right.
So you may say, our priority is literacy. We want our student population to be at or above grade level in reading in all grades. We want all students that way, right? You might make a broad ten-thousand-foot statement that we are, you know, we, we support, or we wanna see improvement in, in, in the literacy outcomes of our students. It would then be the district's responsibility to take that priority and narrow it down to, this is how we're going to do it, and this is how we're going to measure it.
Right, operationalize.
Right, and then you come back, and after they, if they've done whatever they said they've done, and you've supported them as a, as a body, in helping them to make that, uh, make that a reality, then they can measure against the metrics, you can measure whether or not literacy went up across the district, right? And if it didn't, right?
I'm sorry, I see President Elliott put something in, and I see her lingering, so I just wanted to, to cut myself so that she could, if she wanted to say something, where she lead.
It does look like she is off, off-screen, um, and, uh, looks like they will be, um, in another meeting. Um, so we can continue the discussion, uh, while we wait for them to return.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for cutting you off, Dr. Jallow.
No, 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 no cutting off. That, that's kind of like my thought about it. You can tell them what your priorities are, and tell them that one of your priorities, what a particular focus is on early literacy, then, then, you know, no disrespect, but make them work, make them figure out how they're gonna get that done, and how they're gonna measure it. And what is it gonna look like? Well, we're gonna purchase this, well, we're gonna hire that, well, we're gonna change the school to look at this, so that, you know, whatever the case may be, but it's, that's where their expertise kicks in to, to, to make it happen. Right? Because you can't hold yourself responsible for what every principal's doing, or every teacher, that's, that's what they do. Right? You're measuring to see, as a board, did you create policies and an environment where administration could do what you want them to do, what you told them to do, or what you expect them to do.
Right. And, 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 Callia, can you inform, I'm not sure who to ask at this, who, how does this process move forward from here? Because it looks like we have a lot more work to do to make sure our goals are specific and relevant, uh, which is a part of the SMART goal, um, as well, to, to the outcomes that we're looking to produce here. So I, looks like we, we, again, this is capturing the preliminary, and I missed the beginning of the meeting, so you may have already captured that for us. But it looks like this is preliminary focus and conversation. What are our next steps as we really refine this and try to make sure that we do have proper goals set up?
So, um, that's a very, um, very important question. Um, last year, uh, this, the board goals were attacked in two separate meetings, um, so preliminary meetings si- similar to this. Just like last year as well, in the board retreat, we began, the board began those, this, these discussions, and then we had a Part A work session that was, um, form, you know, formulating the goals and adding things, um, removing things, et cetera. And then the second meeting, um, the second meeting was meant to kind of finalize things and vote on adopting the goals. As a reminder, the board does need to adopt this before the school year begins, um, uh, as part of, um, the academic plan.
We're like thirty, thirty-three days away, thirty-four days away from school. Okay.
Um, Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Patterson have their hands up.
So, I'm, I'm, I would like you to add, um, when you can, in reference to, um, commissioners visiting the schools, because everybody's situation is different. I'm re- I retired because of my medical issue this year, so I'm able to do a lot more. There's some, some people, they're, they have other jobs, and they can't visit the schools that often. But, so, but add in there when you can, okay?
Got it. So I have, um, I have added that, that point. Um, Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, go right back to the goals, um, directly and see, um, where my colleagues stand on, um, a safe school environment. If that isn't, if they don't decide on or vote on that being a goal, you know, with what's happening nationally, then I don't think, I have no idea what should be a goal. You know, so I'd like to know, are we wasting our time? Um, you know, if they don't support, you know, this being a goal, that we should make our classrooms conducive to learning and safe environments for learning? Can they comment on that? I'd like a comment on that, uh. You know, if they want further information, need a, you know, uh, research it even further with, see how many schools within our county, you know, have this as a goal, you know, I'll be more than welcome to do that. But like I said, I already looked into Greece myself, and, uh, they also have this, uh, you know, same goal. But I'll be more than happy to do the research if you want me to, but I like to know where they stand.
Does this, because this, we're just providing suggestions at this point to be documented for further discussion, correct, or how does?
No, this is the discussion. This is the time to discuss.
Okay.
Just for the record, Buffalo and Utica, uh, expressly mentioned safety, in either, uh, they don't do the goals, they do core beliefs and values, um, as a district, so they do mention that.
Thank you.
They're, they're two of your big five, just in case you know that way.
Thank you. So can we have some communication, or?
Yeah, well, since I opened up, I'll start here. Um, I definitely am a huge advocate for safe schools for our students. I do believe we need to make sure that coming into the school district, looking at the state of our community in this, in this particular school year, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, that we have a constructive, comprehensive safety plan for our students when they return. What that plan will entail and what that should look like, we need to, yes, I agree, discuss. Um, and I'm open to hearing what the thoughts are around that.
Well, the safety plan is out already. So what we're saying here is, should it be a goal that we set for our district?
So James, are you suggesting that we add an additional goal to, um, our current five goals? Or just, um, put that into an existing goal?
Its own goal in itself.
Yeah, so the goal can't just simply say safety plan. What is your goal around the safety plan? Is it like the, um, fidelity of the safety plan? Is it a goal that, um, a component of the safety plan that you wanna specifically see lifted? Like, what does that, uh, SMART goal around the safety plan look like? Because we definitely need to make sure we have school safety.
Well, it's measurable, I'm sorry for cutting you off. It's measurable, because we look at the data, see what the data tells us. So, the safety plan, that safety, a safe environment, that, um, that in itself is measurable. So we're looking for goals that are measurable, that's a very measurable goal.
Yeah, I, I agree that it's something we can measure, so I'm asking you to give me an idea of the language that you're looking to see in that regard.
I think that's what we draft together. It isn't just James's language. I just came up with the idea, that's a very important goal that we should have, because I saw other schools either discussing it, um, or coming up with their own goals themselves.
Okay, I didn't know if you had any specific language that you wanted to suggest that we could then, you know, talk about further, but you're just saying in general, the goal, okay?
If I go next, I don't know who's calling on whom here.
I, I can, I can call on names in interim, um, yeah, Commissioner, um, Malloy.
So I know at some of the discussions that we've had in the past, you know, when we came up with our, uh, the number of goals that we currently have, we wanna make sure that, well, I would suggest at least that we may be, I think it's important to have safety mentioned in our goals, but I'm thinking if we added it to perhaps the equity goal, um, or if we could pull the goals up on the screen, maybe we could see where we could place that, because I think, um, even in some of the governance trainings that, that we've done in the past, um, they recommend that you don't have more than anywhere between three and, um, three to five goals. And I think, Dr. Jallow, you may have reiterated that recently, um, to all of us, or, uh, mentioned it at some point. We don't wanna make it, uh, too convoluted. Um, we should stay focused on a set number of goals, better to have fewer goals with more specific metrics, metrics perhaps. Um, so I think at, at some point, we had a conversation publicly.
Yes, you're right. Yes.
Yeah, so my, my thought, I guess, would be that safety is very important. I don't know what that's gonna, how that would be worded, or don't have suggestions for that at this time. Um, but perhaps we could put that under equity as part of our goal to create equitable learning environments district-wide, or, uh, ensuring that all students feel safe, um, district-wide.
Well, Dr. Jell was part of our, our group, so myself, uh, Commissioner Powell, and, uh, Dr. Jell.
Yes.
So, uh, she also agreed that this should be another goal on its own.
Yeah, I, i- i- if you put it as a goal, I, I don't want to call it safety per se. I want it safe learning and working environments, and that it would include a lot of things in there, quite frankly. You know, because it's not just students being safe, it's your staff being safe, and safety defined in many different levels, not just physical safety, safety to be different, safe, you know, safe, physical say, that, you know, just, just all of it. So I wasn't, I, I, I tell you the truth, I, I, the safety plan did, did not initially cross my mind until the discussion tonight. I thought of it broader. But I also could make the argument for making it part of number three as, as well, depending on how you reword it. Once again, remember this, do you want your next superintendent to make that an important part of their work? Do you want your superintendent to make sure that there's equitable, there's equity in programming and resource allocation? Do you want your superintendent to do these things? Do you want your superintendent to increase? You know, so maybe that's a different lens to look at it in terms of what you want your superintendent to do, and then you as a board decide how you're gonna help your superintendent to achieve those things.
Any other comments relative to the that, uh, being a goal for many of the other commissioners?
Callia, you were muted.
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I haven't been up, um, so safety is obvious for me. My kids are in this district. I have two daughters in this district. I want them and every other child to be safe, but we ain't looking through it through the same lens. Um, we, we gonna be talking straight up here. Um, I don't need no more police in the schools. I don't think that's the way to safety. I don't think that's the way to safety, and, and I have kids in the district, so, um, I just need to put that out there. We're not gonna beat around the bush with this. I need to put that out there, um. But I do support safety, um, it's such a broad thing, um, in the classroom, um, all that. But I need to be clear, I do not support, uh, police officers in the school. I need to be clear with that.
So, Pardo, oh, I'm sorry, a, a quick question to follow up with, uh, Commissioner Adams. Um, so would you support wording around safety as part of another one of our goals, like equity? Or do you want a standalone goal, or that deals specifically with safety?
Um, equity, I could work with that around there, um. And this, and not only equity, um, some real data there, because I, I got some data on, on whether or not the police keep us safe or not. I got some data on that as well.
Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, Callia. Um, and I, I think Dr. Jallow made some good points as far as being keen on our understanding and, um, definition of school safety, because it does encompass social, emotional, and spiritual, all those type components of safety, and that gets into school climate. I'm also wondering if this isn't even venturing off into potential policy type of conversation. Um, but I do wanna lift that on August ninth, we have this safety, um, plan conversation that's coming up, and I'm very much looking forward to participating in that, and hearing our, um, collective thoughts on that, because we do need this plan. School starts in less than a month, and our, we know what's going on in our community. As far as a board goal, I, I wanna, uh, consider where that would fit and how we would do that, but some, whatever we do around safety needs to be lifted, and we need to be in compliance with whatever we say we're going to do. So we have a safety plan, but we have a lot of plans, and none of our plans mean anything if we're not lifting them and in compliance with what we said we're doing respectfully.
And Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah, could you put up, um, what, uh, the commissioners put together? The first screen that you showed, that myself, Dr. Jallow.
Oh, sure, yes, I can, I can, back to the, the columns.
Uh, Powell put together.
This one?
Yes. So we are very careful with our wording here. Um, support safe learning and working environments. All right, ensure all school building and safety plans are updated, and then we're looking for recommendations.
Okay, so you do have something regarding the, um, the policies in there. Good.
Okay.
I guess for our purposes tonight, we just need to decide before we do wording, whether or not we're going to make another goal, which would take us to how many goals? I'm sorry.
That would take us to four, four major buckets. Um, I think what would be kind of, um, kind of bouncing off of that, what would be useful, I think, is maybe to look at the ones that have been sh- shared, and then if, if there can be kind of some general consensus on which ones we should move forward with, and then we can just kind of dump the ones that there's no gen- there's no, um, shared, shared idea of moving forward.
Um, Callia, can you enlarge that on the screen?
Yeah, sure. So, um, the, the first group did, they did suggest two new buckets. One bucket that had to do with improving board operations and decision-making, and then one that, and then obviously the one that has been discussed, um, more in depth on the school, s- school safe learning, working, work, school safe, supporting safe learning and working environments, sorry. Um, so is there any consensus on adding these to as larger buckets? That would take you to to five.
I don't know, I don't, for me personally, I don't see us making five buckets. I think we should stay concise within three. If we were to, um, consider or entertain, um, the school safety, um, component with clarity, I kind of agree with what Commissioner Malloy stated as far as finding a way to weave that in under one of the components of, um, increased equity for all students, because that would encompass, it would still, it would not dilute this point, but it would also fine tune, you know, the reach of how many goals we have. But it could be part of, considered it for part of that. I don't know what other people think about that idea.
I think as a, a board goal, which really drives the strategic plan eventually by our superintendent for the district, um, I don't know that we should add improved board operations and decision-making as like our, our goal that we have front and center on our, our website. I don't know if that bucket is necessary. I think that we wanna keep it focused on our academic achievement, the financial condition of our CSD, and that equity for all students. And then, like I said before, I'd like to put supporting safe learning and working environments underneath. Um, I want it to more, to be more student-focused, so maybe put that under our equity bucket instead.
Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Powell?
I don't care. We threw those, I, you know, our sessions were brainstorming sessions. If there's no, if there's no consensus for, for it, then I'm not gonna advocate for it. I, I will say that in our group, we had a good, robust discussion with Dr. Jallow about this, uh, improved operations and decision, board operations and decision-making. Um, and the only other thing I would say is that of all of the goals, this is one that does not, repeat, not cascade down to superintendent, uh, goals for the district. This is, this is our wheelhouse. We have to figure it out. And in our, in our discussion, we talked about how if we can't figure this out, then, uh, we're not gonna have much success driving any of the other goals. So whether it's like hidden, and that, but everybody understands it needs to happen, or maybe we don't agree that it needs to happen. Um, i- you know, i- it is a, uh, what Ricardo likes to say, the elephant in the room kind of thing. So we can talk about it, or we can not talk about it, I don't care.
Well, go ahead, Dr. Jell.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I can't see you guys right now. Wait, go ahead. So I just wanna say very quickly, um, you're not gonna be able to do the others really without some sense of addressing, um, how you deal with each other, how you make decisions, how you talk to each other, how you communicate with each other. Um, these other things will, um, be, uh, twice as difficult, and it will be very hard for a superintendent to satisfy your, uh, expectations, because they will be scattered based on disagreement. So, um, I don't know whether you want it as a goal, um, but certainly if it's not a goal, it better be somewhere, because this is a challenge. This is a challenge. And it's gonna be a challenge for whoever you bring in here. It's a challenge. I don't know how you solve it just yet. We're still working on that, but that is an issue. And so I, I think it's worthy of a conversation as to where it might find its proper place in your discussions.
Perhaps in the code of ethics itself, you know, the, that we all sign, you know, like, add a bullet to that, and then we all agree to sign that. That's a possibility. I just don't know if that, I, I, I agree that it's very important, um, and we should be doing those things, but I don't know that that should be front and center on our website.
Yeah, maybe it's an overarching, an overarching way that you conduct the business of your three goals or your four goals. It's just an overarching piece. Maybe that's a way to address it, as opposed to calling it a goal. Um, it's just an overarching core belief of how you're going to operate. Um, that might be something. And I hate to do this, but I have been asked to join another meeting as well, the same meeting, uh, and I promise to return as, as quickly as possible, but please excuse me.
So, once again, something is said is kind of, is kind of broad, but it's really no different than what I said. I totally agree with this, um, Commissioner Powell. Um, I, I stated as much in my, um, one of my bullet points. Um, I may have worded it a little different than you did, but it basically meant the same thing. Um, we gotta tighten up, um, especially publicly, man, we roll, supposed to be role models. Um, so I, 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 I don't disagree with that at all. Um, for me to keep beating, beating a, a horse, I mean, I'm telling you right now in the public, that I agree with you, um, that we need to improve board operations and decision-making. So you do have, um, support on that from me.
Can I, I'm gonna just go ahead and, um, okay, thank you. Um, so I don't think it's a question about the accountability piece. It's about the practice of it. I don't know if it should go under board goals, but it definitely needs to go under somewhere that's not, um, that, that can change. Like, right now, we're able to change up goals as we see fit, as the win, well, as the, um, needs of the district change or what have you. The accountability of the board is something that should be, um, grounded in, in, in a stable place. So, um, what are those other areas that we can put this in? That where it just, it doesn't move or go away, where we actually can hold, e- hold, um, this standard accountable, because I don't think it's a question. Uh, but it's, it's a practice, because again, we do a really good job of saying a lot of great things. Yet we turn around and we do the opposite of what it is we say we stand for as a board. So is it, does this go under board goals? Or does, uh, where, where else can we substant- put this where it has substance? Because I would like to see our board goals more focused on the students and the, and the district, and I do understand from the head it flows, like, how we function, how we do things as a board, it impacts how everything else happens. Um, I just, I'm trying to figure out if this is the right space to have that. So I agree that it needs to exist, and it needs to be upheld on some level, but where, um, is, is what I'm trying to, um, figure out.
Camille, I appreciate what you're saying. I don't have a better idea either. So I don't, maybe we need to all, like, sleep on it. I don't know. Maybe, maybe something will come to us, uh, individually, uh, you know, between now and our next meeting.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah, so I wanna do my homework also relative to, um, other school decks, districts, especially the, uh, big five, and see where they are with, um, uh, the goal of, um, uh, making, uh, the schools a safe learning environment. Um, and should that be a goal on its own? Uh, again, from what I've seen, and from the evidence that I've seen, from what J- Dr. Jallow has just indicated, it hasn't swayed my colleagues, and out of all these goals up here, without a safe learning environment, these goals mean nothing, because the students are leaving, going to other schools, because of, one of the reasons being, um, because of safety. So if we can't come to, um, an agreement that-
I think we all agree on that.
No, no, I'm not done, I'm not done. Please don't interrupt, you don't do that. So we can't come to an agreement that any life being one life is important, and the loss of one life, just one, is important, then I don't know what else is. And again, I agree with all these goals that are up there, but when you put something down underneath something else, it's less important even visually. But when it's up there with all the other goals, and I'm stressing this, because life is important. Our students leaving and going to other, uh, going to charter schools and private schools and urban suburban programs, they're leaving for reasons, and one involves safety. And in order to bring those students back, I'm trying to come up with ways to help us bring students back. But if kids don't feel safe, parents, they don't want their kids coming to this district. And if we don't make it a priority and say, that's a goal at the top, not down underneath something else, that's less of a priority when someone looks at it. So I would, I don't wanna say beg, because I don't wanna beg anyone to do anything, but I would ask that my colleagues sleep on this too. Because I don't wanna attend any funeral of one of our kids, one of our students in the district, because we lacked on doing our due diligence. And I'm just asking you to take a second look, think about it. Should that be a goal as we see a precedence being set by some other schools? We can lead in this area. We don't always have to follow. And I know we've only had three goals. It doesn't say we can't have four. It doesn't say we can't have five. We must be willing to lead and do things that are different, and outside the box, and able to grow.
Yes. And, and, and pardon my interruption if I'm interrupting you, because we wanna make sure we're, we're talking to our colleagues the way we want. We just talked about that in one of the pieces, right, that we address one another with respect and decorum. So, uh, again, it's, it's let's make sure we're practicing the things we say, because we literally just watched it play out again. And so again, I, what I wanna say is for myself, um, and make it explicitly clear on, on no level, and is the idea of school safety non-important or less important? The objective for me is to make sure that when we lift something like that, that it's in the proper space, and that we set ourselves up for success, to make sure that we are able to enact it the way it needs to be. Does it belong under board goals? Does it belong over here? Where does it belong? I don't know. But it definitely belongs somewhere, and I'm interested to discuss that on, on the ninth, um, as far as what that plan looks like, because regardless of where we put it, how we implement it, operationalize it, and make sure that it actually comes to fruition, is more important than any, any piece of paper we put it on. Just like all the other stuff we have. Lots of papers, lots of plans, but if it's not, if it's not held up and done, it, it really doesn't mean anything. So I do, I do get your sentiments, but I don't want to, um, characterize the board of not feeling this, uh, pu- put it out there that people don't feel it safe, because we chose not to maybe put it under the category of board goals specifically. Because I don't hear anyone on here not sa- saying that this is not, um, a safety issue. My son went to this school district, my sister works in the school district, my niece and nephew went to this district. I graduated from this district. I still see students, even in my job today, that go to these schools or have graduated from these schools. So I definitely want to see our children safe. And that's, that's not even a question. And I think really what we're tiptoeing around is the conversation around what school safety looks like. So I think Commissioner Adams is really ca- good at calling a thing a thing, and that's the conversation I know that's gonna come out on the ninth, and I'm on, I'm here for it. It doesn't change my position on, on what school safety looks like for me, but again, school safety is more, uh, than just the physical safety. It is also the emotional safety of our students. We don't want our students coming to school feeling like their teachers don't like them, because there's a bunch of teachers that wrap their arms around kids, and then there's teachers that, that aren't doing such a good job sometimes. So we, we gotta balance out what school safety looks like, and what school climate looks like for our students. But as far as the physical safety, that's the plan we're having a conversation on, on August ninth as well. So I think we're gonna have a robust dialogue around that.
Commissioner Powell?
Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, so, um, I'm not sure how far I want to back, go back into what you just said, uh, Camille. Uh, there was an exchange, there was an interruption and a, and a claiming back of time. And I thought that actually happened how it should happen is that somebody stands up for themselves and reclaims their time respectfully. And, and that's kind of a, I think that was kind of a model for how we should do it. Um, and, um, but yeah, and you also pointed to what Ricardo said about being good at calling a thing a thing. I want to make sure we don't call a thing more than a thing. James is, is advocating for a strong statement and a strong set of actions around safety. Now, I know that Ricardo interpret, has already stated, interprets that to mean, school safety officers in our buildings. That's not all it means. It, that, that subject will come up again and it'll come up again, whether we have a, a safety as a goal or not. So we shouldn't, um, we shouldn't discount everything that James has brought to the table here just because we would do or probably will disagree on school safety officers in our schools. Uh, uh, we're, we're going to have those conversations, whether it's a goal or not. And, and that doesn't, that doesn't diminish the fact that safety is important. We've all said it in our own ways, the school safety. Um, e- emotional safety of our kids, emotional safety of our teachers. Um, uh, you know, as well as their physical safety are all goals, are, are all things that we prize. Every one of us prizes that because we know how important it is. Um, I, I just want to make sure everyone's contribution gets a fair hearing. That's all I'm trying to say.
Commissioner Malloy, forgive me. I just wanted to respond and I'm going to get off my soapbox, but I do want to, um, we can agree to disagree and thank you for your opinion, although it was not slot. Um, I do want to say that I, I did recognize, um, uh, an exchange and there was an, what may have appeared to be an interruption. And there was, the way it was addressed, don't do that. I thought that was a little harsh. And so I tried to, you know, that was a little snarky to me. And so I did call that out. I see you nodding your head and understanding, uh, Commissioner Powell. So that's what I was talking about, just saying, we want to be mindful on, on the things we say we want to see, that we are actually operating in that way. It's again, I'm going to reiterate that school safety is not, um, it's not a question. And I've already said, yes, we're going to be visiting that question or that conversation on the ninth is going to be ro, robust and it will include, um, different parts of the discussion. So I said what I did say and I, and I meant what I said as far as, um, Commissioner Adams does do a great job of calling a thing a thing. And we know that that is a huge component of the conversation that we'll be having. So I'm looking forward to it. It's important to me as well. And Commissioner Malloy, thank you for allowing me to interrupt and I do apologize.
No, it's all, it's all fine. I don't take those types of things personally. Um, especially in this format, because we're on Zoom and sometimes it's hard to, you know, hear people or things are delayed. And so you don't realize you're interrupting people. Um, but hopefully we can extend a little more grace to one another. Um, with that being said, I just want to say I, I agree wholeheartedly with what Commissioner Adams, uh, said earlier. And I also agree completely, I agree with components of what, uh, Commissioner Powell said. And I don't think there is a person on this board who doesn't feel that safety is something we should be very focused on. Um, as Commissioner Simmons has so eloquently, um, reiterated to everyone, that broader conversation we'll be having around safety on August ninth. I, I think that was the date. Um, and I think that's the conversation that, that Commissioner, um, Patterson seems to want to have here. Um, I don't think that safety needs to be a standalone goal. When we developed these goals over the course of the last few years, we, we narrowed it down. We pared down our goals from, uh, Callie, did we originally have five? And then we pared it down to three. State monitors guidelines?
Um, I'll have to double check the history on that. I'm not completely clear, but the, the, the past two years, it's ha, has only been two. Um, has only been three, sorry.
And so I think that safety should always be a, a concern for us and should always be addressed. Um, but the, the goals, and we learned this in our governance training, if you recall, Commissioner Patterson, that the goals really help to drive um, directives, give, giving directives to our superintendents so then they can create a plan for the district. So I think that it might be better if we include safety language underneath perhaps each of our goals, instead of making it a standalone, because I think you usher in a, a whole other conversation and debate, um, that we don't necessarily need to have. The board made a decision around what we wanted safety to look like um, in our schools. Um, and I know I for one, don't want to see an increase in, um, cops in our schools. I think that we made that decision a few years ago for, uh, the reasons that, that were presented then and still stand today. Our, our community, that's what they were asking for. Um, and although we can, we can debate back and forth. I don't think that that needs to be, I don't think the word safety needs to be a separate call. I think that we can implement that language within our existing goals and just try to stay as focused as possible on, uh, academic improvement for our district.
Okay. I don't see any further hands. Um, I believe that, uh, the next step would really be to, 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 to have folks decide where we go from here. Um, there is a special meeting on, um, ne, next week after the ESA meeting, um, next week, Tuesday, August ninth. And so if commissioners want to revisit at that time, um, uh, I will send out all of the different, um, uh, s- spreadsheet showing the recommended changes and, um, folks can, um, deliberate on those, um, independently. And then we can come back with some more information to, to move the goals forward. Um, what, what do commissioners say to that?
I, I agree with that, Callie. I think it's a good idea to, to take a look and that, that way I can, um, narrow down where I think we can build on and, and which ones seem, seem relevant.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Patterson?
Now, I'm going back, uh, to that last statement, um, that one of my colleagues made. Um, so, uh, just in closing, um, I'd like the public to know where I stand on this and where you stand as commissioners. So this is what these meetings are all about. Not only having meetings with ourself and, and coming up with decisions, but letting the public know how we think. And obviously we're different commissioners. We're going to have different thoughts and different opinions. But for me, I think it's one of the most important goals that is up there. And I'll go back and I'll say it 10 million times. You know, it's, uh, insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. So yes, you did things certain way last year or the year before and the year before that, maybe 10 years. But we're in a different era today. We're in a very violent society today. A lot of things are happening with a younger generation. They want to feel safe when they come to school. This is their safe haven. At least it should be. So yes, this is going to be a priority for me until my fourth year on this board. I'm here for four years. And I'm going to mention safety over and over and over again in an environment. Not once tonight, did you hear me mi, mention the P word. Not once.
Well, I don't know about all that, but I know that I appreciate you. I will let you finish, but I want you to be
Can I please finish my statement, please?
Not to mischaracterize
Point of order.
Safety for other board members.
Point of order. Can I finish my statement, please?
Be careful. Okay.
Can I finish my statement, please?
You may finish. I'm asking you to be
Thank you. Thank you. As I said, to me, I'm speaking for myself as a commissioner. And the importance, I think, of having a, a positive school environment for our kids to be conducive to learning. And for our teachers to be able to teach. Safety is of the utmost importance. There's two teachers in this room that are certified, that I know of. If, if there's a third one, I, I apologize. I, I missed it. We know how it is in the classroom. I've talked to teachers here in the district. I've taught in the district. So that's why I'm speaking out for the teachers, for the students that want to learn, to make our classrooms conducive to learning. And if someone doesn't want that, as far as a commissioner, as a priority in the, in the, as far as a goal, then you stated your opinion, but I stated mine. So I thank you for your time. I know I, I, uh, probably talked too much relative to
Yes.
But no, it's not yes, because it could save a life. I just, uh, I'm done.
You're, you're mischaracterizing a lot of things and taking disproportionately taking it out of character. That's all out of context.
All right. That's your
Yeah, may I speak? I think my hand up was up, uh, right after James's hand. So if you're done, James, are you all finished now? James, are you done? Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you. You can go ahead.
Um, I think that there is a mischaracterization, but perhaps a misunderstanding. I don't think there's a single commissioner here. Again, I'll reiterate, he doesn't value safety. Um, what that looks like for everybody might, it might differ. Um, but we all value it. And just because we don't choose to make it uh, a standalone goal, doesn't mean that we don't value it. So to Commissioner Simmons' point, I think that there is a bit of a mischaracterization around that. And yes, I am a teacher and I do value safety in my classroom. And I actually have, uh, vested interest in that. My four children, well, three now and one that's just graduated. Um, I'll go to this district, right? And so of course I want my own children to be safe. But I think that we want to avoid being self-righteous, um, and making assumptions about other people. I just would caution you to perhaps consider that we all value safety. Um, what that looks like, again, it's going to differ between our members, uh, but it doesn't mean that we don't all value it. And if there's a way that perhaps we can incorporate the word safety, if that's what you're looking for, an emphasis on safety as maybe some of those sub-bullets for the three goals that we've already, you know, worked hard to, to produce. Um, uh, safety is important. Let's, let's put it at the forefront. Yes. But again, we don't need to have a standalone goal to show our community that we want a safe learning environment for all our kids. So that's
Why not have a standalone goal? Why not have a standalone? Give me the reason why you don't want a standalone goal. Why not have a standalone goal? Please.
I don't think we want to recreate the wheel. I think that there has been an overemphasis on uh, your definition perhaps of safety in this district for years, and it's led to a school, the prison pipeline. We can have this conversation on the ninth, which we're going to, but at the same time, like we don't have to contribute to that by making that a standalone goal, right? We can incorporate the wording about safety and wanting to ensure the social, emotional safety of our students as well as their physical safety. There are many ways that we could word that within our existing goals that would place an emphasis on keeping our, all of our students safe.
So let me quote you. You just said that I was part of the issue with the school, the pipeline.
That's not what I You're mischaracterizing what I just
Well, tell me what you said, because I want to be clear on this, because I think you said that I was part of that problem.
No, that's not at all.
Adrian, I see like other hands and I don't know, we don't have board leadership.
Right. So, um, I, um, we're clear. Can you tell me, did the president, uh, appoint a chair pro tem?
She did not, she did not, she did not appoint to anyone. Um, I did receive just a little bit of, um, instruction here, um, via text. It does appear that, um, uh, they, they, they will not be coming back, so we can adjourn from here.
Right. So, so if, um,
I see Commissioner Adams and myself have last points to make respectfully, Adrian. And then I don't know if, then you want to
Then adjourn. I saw, I said, uh, Commissioner Simmons and then, uh, Commissioner Adams, please.
I just wanted to make the suggestion, because I'm, I'm really not interested in the banter at this particular point. But I do want to say that, um, on the ninth, I think it would be, uh, for, we all agree that safety is extremely important to us. And I'm excited about us really putting our hands and minds together around what that's going to look like for our district. Um, so when we focus on our students and not each other, when we focus on our students, what does that look like with our children coming back to school in less than 30 days or 30, a little over 30 days, our students are coming back. We need to make sure that we, our conversation is focused on a comprehensive safety plan to ensure that they come back to school safe. And that plan and whatever that discussion looks like, we need to have a comprehensive understanding of what we're going to have in place for them. We know what's going on in the community, so we, let's not sugarcoat it. And emotional safety, although that's extremely important, we do need to focus on the physical safety. What does that comprehensive safety plan consist of? So I think if we use our energy to put down some ideas, each of us, I'll, I'll hold myself accountable to try to come up with at least three to five ideas that I think would be helpful for this safety plan. Um, I'm ready to have that conversation on the ninth. And I'm, I'm off my soapbox. Thank you, Commissioner Adams. I see your hand.
Commissioner Adams, yep.
No, no, I'm, I'm not even going to say anything, because if I say something, then Will is going to try to defend Commissioner Patterson. I, I just ain't, we're going through that tonight. I'm, I, I'm, I'm done. I'm done here.
One of the commissioners, um, uh, like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
All those in favor? Have a good night, everyone.